We want you to guess what we're saying. Want to make it funner, even funner, right? Sorry. It's a good morning. Thing that's good too. The only thing, Marta and I don't know that it's a big deal. On the May or March twenty one. Attendants trying to flip. Think that you've. It's here somewhere. Others than that. That's, like I said, I don't know if that's a big deal. Is that the one that that we had that got pushed forward because we have these two items? Adjourned seven. Commissioner Nelson, do you have any comments on minutes from the packet?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm only getting a it's a little bit mixed. I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing everything.
Is it, is this better?
That, that, yes, that bit was better. Right there was better.
Okay. Yeah, we've really got to speak into the mics. Okay. Okay, Charlie, I'll let you go through the items with us if you would please.
Can do, Mr. Chairman. So today, on today's agenda, we've got, uh, number one, we'll need to make a motion on, uh, approval of those minutes. And then number two, under administrative items, we've got two items. One is the, uh, request for preliminary approval of Mountain View Land Livestock subdivision. And the other is a design review approval for Weaver storage sheds located at eighteen hundred. Right.
Did we get the information that's on the agenda or that's in the report? It's requested in the report but not wasn't present in the report.
We do. We'll be presenting that during the meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Nothing really outstanding on either one of those two items other than, other than some of the information wasn't. Present previously. Anything we need to know?
On the items on the agenda?
Yes.
Uh, we've got a report from, uh, Scott and from Candy on both those items. They'll be able to walk you kind of through each one of them. Let's start with the Mountain View Land Livestock subdivision.
Evening Commissioners. The first is a subdivision located in the A two zone. Couple of things to note. One is that this is a twenty-one lot, lot average subdivision. That's out on seventy-five hundred west. Which is, uh, considered a substandard county road. Planning doesn't typically allow developments to go through an approval process. Um, when the sole access is off of a substandard county road. Weaver Fire District and Weaver County Planning and Engineering have been working with the applicant. To establish a fire road that heads west to the nearest crossing, which is just about three miles from the proposed development site. Um, and I can go through some additional details as far as future plans to extend eighteen hundred south to the east. We're going to be working with current and future developers in that area to get that road extended. Um, as quickly as we're able to, as quickly as development is going on. So that we don't have that sole access issue. Those are just some things to note. I will tell you that they have got a letter from West Warren, Warren Water. It's not a will serve letter. It's a preliminary letter and so planning has required that they get a will serve letter before we come before you again for final approval. And then they will need an unconditional final approval letter from West Warren, Warren Water before they go before the county commission. Okay.
And I presume that's based on the secondary access or secondary availability for the subdivision? The wheels are from water.
West Warren, Warren, uh, yes. Secondary water, correct? Is that what you meant? Or secondary access?
Secondary water.
Yes, yes.
Sorry. I gotta get closer to the microphone. Not used to that.
Do you have any questions for me regarding this application?
You want to run through that secondary access for us?
Yeah, so I can pull up the presentation. See that map up there? Zoom out a little bit here. This is seventy-five hundred west here. This is the nearest railroad crossing. It's been a topic of discussion in our office the last probably couple of years at least, but more so with this development. The next nearest crossing would be out west here. And so the developer is looking at escrowing for a fire access road that would run along eighteen hundred south or where eighteen hundred south would be continued. And then it would jog up here and cross the railroad here. That's what they're proposing right now for their emergency access or egress, I guess. Um, the plan eventually is to, um, and I hope I'm not getting into too much detail here because this will be presented as well during the meeting. The plan that has been discussed with Mr. Price and will be discussed with future developers is to collect a project improvement fee per lot. And that would essentially go into a bucket that would go towards improving and extending eighteen hundred south to the east. Um, and it may even cross the river or it may just come in contact with that proposed West Davis corridor. That is the plan at this moment. And so when the subdivision goes through final approval, uh, development agreement will be reported with this that outlines that more specifically. That give you a good ideas to what to expect going forward.
What's required for the subdivision? Is, is there a secondary access required for, for the subdivision?
There's typically, the fire district likes to, so there are two things that come into play here. We've got sole access off of a substandard county road. The county doesn't like to see that and frankly, wouldn't like to approve subdivisions that have sole access off of one road that's not even up to county standard. So the developer will be required to bring the portion of the road that runs along the front of his development up to county standard. Um, along with being able to have a secondary egress. Um, we have to work with fire district. Uh, fire district is starting to, I don't want to say tighten up their standards, but I think they're becoming more aware of what good standards of practice should be, I think, related to fire safety. And so we've been in discussions with them as well. And Charlie may have more to add. I know that Charlie has had several discussions with Mr. Price and with Dave Reed regarding this secondary egress, but both of those fulfill a fire and a planning requirement. Do you have anything to add to that, Charlie?
No, you actually did that really well, other than to say that, um, typically, this is a typical situation. We've got a railroad on the north with that river on the east. Um, and a lake on the west and south. There's, there's no way to access this other than across the railroad as a current stance. The county is, uh, county commission is aware of the situation and is very eager to extend a road to the river and bridge that. That'll do a couple of things, not just help the development here on seventy-five hundred. Well, we know we've got a couple of developers looking to go in this area. There's also potential for, uh, to get some, uh, manufacturing jobs in the industrial area. And ultimately, one of the biggest things we heard from the, the public, um, as we started the Western Weaver futures process three years ago was a loop back, uh, from west, uh, from Little Mount. And so twelfth street won't be the only way. So we can come back. Um, I have asked both developers who are looking, uh, to develop in this area right now to look to you dot at this current time to potentially secure that crossing where the legacy, uh, or excuse me, the, um, West Weaver corridor is supposed to cross the river. If you dot can secure that crossing and potentially put some funds into at least one side of that future freeway. We can have a two lane road coming in and out. Put some developer funds into that, put the county funds into it, but you dot funds into it and get it built a lot faster. So we're hoping to find ways to explore that with you. If that doesn't work out, we're just going to be looking at crossing the river right yourself and extending eighteen hundred south until it connects to where the existing eighteen hundreds.
Anything else, Commissioners?
So I, the substandard street, they'll be, um, improving the street along the development there, but where, where does it become standard? How far are they away from standard roads?
Not, I believe, until you cross the railroad to the north. Do you know how far north is it? Up to twelve hundred?
I think it's twelve, well, nine hundred, uh, I believe is the nearest. Now, um, as far as the standard goes, I think we're just shy of the standard as far as the cross section goes on that asphalt. Um, and so it's not a substantial problem. Um, there is, it is safe two-way vehicle traffic. Um, it's not one of the roads that we listed on our substandard road inventory because we, we're prioritizing um, twenty feet or less of asphalt and this has just over twenty feet. Um, between twenty-one and twenty-two, uh, all the way down, uh, seventy-five hundred. So it's one of the better, uh, dead end roads out of our substandard dead end roads.
But it does, it does dead end to the south though. Okay, so there's only one way to and from this development right now.
And Charlie, um, what is the current code for sub? Currently, there is no development allowed on the end of a substandard road, correct?
Unless, so there's no development allowed if there's sole access. Um, so that's why we're working with both of these, uh, developers specifically, in this case, uh, with this developer to provide a secondary address so that there can be at least that, uh, standard, um, met. And then ultimately, the goal is obviously to have an actual street network connection here, not just a reverse address. The deal that we've, uh, uh, preliminarily worked out with the applicant is that that emergency egress is actually going to be a county driveway. It's going to be dedicated to the county, not just a dirt road. We're not going to require the full, um, uh, public standard to be installed, uh, for those three miles. Uh, we just want to make sure we can get people out. And so it is only going to be a fire access road. The applicant, uh, has requested to keep it, um, under his own ownership for a few years, but is volunteering after, uh, three years to dedicate it to county ownership. Um, and then from there, the applicant, as he phases the rest of his project, will phase off of eighteen hundred. So that, as he's doing that, eighteen hundred will be improved to bulk county standard as he's, um, phasing along. And I don't think it's too far out, uh, before the neighbor to the west picks up eighteen hundred. Um, and, uh, constructs it to full standard as well for industrial.
Under item number two in our staff recommendations, that covers that through the, the, the development agreement, that, that will be taken care of.
Yes, that should be under item number two.
That's right. And that's going to require that they build that road.
Right or? Yeah, that's, it's going to be all weather surfacing, uh, twenty feet wide. So it's not going to be, uh, a full asphalt road or anything like that. It just needs to be able to support a fire truck or all the vehicles from seventy-five hundred trying to exit that direction.
Fire code, what, seventy-five, eighty thousand pound road?
Seventy-five thousand pound fire, that's right.
And it'll follow the future trajectory of, is it eighteen hundred? And then be developed as the developers, um, gain property on that road.
That's right. That's right. Which I think is probably our, our best outcome in this situation, uh, regardless of what development happens in this area. Uh, it's been, uh, nice to work with the applicant on this. I think these are, uh, great goals moving forward. I, I wish we could work with developers who can problem solve in this way. Fortunately, there is only two landowners to the west to work with. Um, one of the reasons why when we're dealing with other roads that are in this kind of situation, it's harder for them to find their way out. But, uh, this particular situation, it's three miles, but, uh, all too, too long, so.
Need anything else, Commissioner? Okay. Thank you. Better hear something about our other item. See, Weaver, Weaver storied sheds at approximately eighteen hundred G one light drive.
Yep, uh, it's actually more precisely nineteen fifty-seven. So, um, this item is before you as a design review because it is a larger development totaling about eighty-two thousand square feet. Um, anything that is being proposed as a new commercial or manufacturing structure is required to come before the planning commission. If it exceeds certain limitations, it needs to come before you for your, your review. Um, that threshold is anything that is in excess of ten thousand square feet in area or disturbs more than an acre. So this is a very large proposal as far as areas concerned. So requires a designer view. The designer view section of code requires that we take a look at a couple of, of topics. Um, so we'll touch on traffic safety and traffic congestion, outdoor advertising, landscaping, building and site layout, tidies, mean screenage, other engineering questions. We'll also touch on zoning and a few other things like that, but um, in a nutshell, this proposal came before, uh, the agency review committee, which is where we get together with the planners, engineers, the fire marshal. Um, we kind of talk about high level conceptual points of this. Uh, so they went through that, got some feedback from the fire marshal and from planning to then develop the site plan that we'll be looking at today. Um, in a nutshell, you know, the development does meet all the site development standards for setbacks, lot coverage ratio. Um, and what we're looking at today is more the design review of materials, colors. Um, if you look in the designer view code, it indicates that, um, designer views are done to ensure that the general design layout and appearance of commercial sites and buildings is orderly and harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood. So that'll be our task for you. If you have any other questions, we'll obviously go into more detail. Need to get into the later meeting.
I have a question for council. In our chair, vice chair meeting Thursday. It was mentioned that we're, you know, we're going to move away from taking public comment on administrative items. And I presume that means all administrative items, including designer views. Is that correct?
Correct. So if you want to move away from taking any public comment on those items, you're free to. If the commission as a whole feels that you would like to, administrative items, you can open up for public comment if you choose.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to have a conversation about that before we get started with meeting. How, how do you feel about that?
Chair. Not all administrative items require a lot of, um, input, but I do like to hear from the residents post by just because the perspective that we can't get. Uh, it's just a, to me, it's a valuable perspective, whether it's in our hands to make adjustments accordingly. But I like to, to hear from those who are most impacted.
Thank you. Well. There, I, I agree with Commissioner Wickers' comment, but the problem that I think comes from taking those comments is a lot of times our hands are tied by these items. You know, there, it, it's kind of, as long as the applicant has come in and met what the code says as an administrative item, we have to follow what that code says. So there's been times where we've had, you know, those meetings and people walk out of these meetings, feel like we don't listen to them. You know, and it's not that we don't listen. It's just, you know, we, we appreciate the comment and we appreciate the input, but our hands are tied. You know, it, it's not the, the, the problem isn't in the subdivision, it's in the code. You know, and, and sometimes to, to help them understand or to make them understand the code is where we got to correct some of these issues. Not by what applications in front of us. And it gets hard when that application's in front of us. They're kind of locked in, you know, once that applicant comes and makes application, they have to follow that code. And I think that's the frustrating part. You know, when, you know, they, they take the time, they come to the meeting, you know. We, we do accept the public comments for items not on the agenda, but that's the hard part is, you know, it doesn't really help us in those decisions, but kind of like when they come through for these preliminary approvals, they're basically giving us a site plan and, you know, making sure they're meeting the zoning requirements and that, that's where it's hard for me. I just don't want to have people feel like we're not listening.
So there is, there is an aspect of our approvals that depend on the, the well-being, the safety and well-being of the community. And oftentimes during public comment, those things are brought up. I think initially, um, of the la- last, the last one that I, I can remember is I think it was River Ban subdivision. They talked about the sewage and the effects of the runoff into that canal. Uh, that's something that maybe we wouldn't have thought of because of, that doesn't affect our, uh, privy to that on a day-to-day basis. So some public comment is, is valuable and, and I don't know the balance because you're right. I think there comes a whole lot of people feel empowered to be able to speak their concerns and their irritations or their hatred towards a development. When in reality, those aren't valid reasons for us to deny. But if they do get up and share a concern, maybe they've read through the code and found something that was missed by the planning commission that they could present. And that would be a valuable comment. And unfortunately, a lot of the comments that we've heard are just, I don't like it, it's too much traffic. All these things that we can't do anything about. So I don't know the balance. That's just kind of my concern. I think there are some valid, um, comments by the public that help us kind of consider things that we haven't considered. Specifically to the safety and well-being of the community, but also, um, they come with some things in the code that we haven't considered or missed.
I think my, uh, way in on this is if we do take comment, it should be the exception, not the rule. Uh, you know, there's been a lot of work put in on the, the code. And really, that's the time when a lot of these myths need to be brought up, not three years later when we're down the road doing a hearing on a development or something. And I do agree with Greg is, is, is there, there is some times when we should hear, but it shouldn't be the rule because a lot of these things are vetted fairly well. I mean, we, we don't know why there's sewer in that canal. We don't know whether the, the new subdivision there, they may all be on the sewer. So, uh, and the, the other thing is, is, uh, public clamor is a line about the traffic, just like others have said here. We don't like the traffic. We don't like the noise. Well, we're, we're not engineers. We're not the traffic people. We're not fire people. We're not the water board. And so what we have to go by is the code. And so, uh, my feeling is there may be a time when we should hear, but it should be the exception because our, our job really is to go with what the zoning sets. And so that's my two bits.
Thank you. The other thing, Commissioner Jarrett, um, that I was thinking of is we want to encourage public participation. Um, allowing public comment does do that, even if we can explain to them that there are certain things that we can't do anything about, but to see a room filled up with people here to talk about. Go right over it. I, I think that discourages public participation probably faster than listening to them complain and then not do anything about it. So just my thoughts on it. I, I lean more towards allowing it, although I know it prolongs our meetings till nine o'clock at night sometimes about listening to things that we can't do anything about, but I, I was just kind of where I'm at. I think if we're going to do public or having public, um, participation, then we gotta, you gotta let them speak.
Commissioner Nelson, would you like to chime in?
Commissioner Nielsen, would you like to chime in?
Uh, you know, I, I concur with what you're saying. I, our, our hands really are tied. And I know that the typical, my, my career has been full of people just saying, I hate traffic and we don't want you out here. It's typically people that have just moved in and they don't want any, they don't want any neighbors now. So I think all the comments have been very good.
Chair, I have a suggestion question, maybe for legal. Is it possible to allow only written comments so that those can be reviewed and posted and considered, but not take up time in a meeting like this?
Well, the public is always welcome to write in comments or thoughts to the planning commission or to the planning department generally. So, but to require that as the only recourse for the public. Yeah, it's possible. I'm not sure I've seen that done before. I'm not, I'm not sure.
But currently that is an avenue. If we, if we didn't ask for public comment on administrative items, it doesn't exclude them from, um, giving comments on administrative items and writing to us.
Correct, yes.
That's always a possibility. So we could find a way to encourage that somehow.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I agree that taking public comment does encourage the public. However, what's a little discouraging is that when that happens, normally, not always, because there are good comments, as Commissioner Bell mentioned. There are, there are productive things that come out of those comments. Occasionally, the problem is, is mostly its components. It, it would be nice to be able to motivate the public somehow to be here when there's no one in this room, when we're going over legislative items. The concern how we actually create the codes and pass our recommendations on to the commission. You know, we take a lot of finger pointing at us, you, 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 and you. And, you know, it, it gets a little bit frustrating because when we're going through that legislative process, nine times out of 10, there isn't a soul that's in this pot of water. And that's what makes it really, really difficult and a hard decision to say, we're going to take all of the public comment when it's not required. So it's so.
So I agree. I think maybe the solution then would be more finding a way to encourage more participation during this legislative life. And the first thing that comes to my mind is probably, right? I mean, I'm sure that people post on Ellis website, but people that even want to hear that. Um, but when you're getting a notice within, you know, a hundred feet of the development, everybody feels like they're supposed to cover voice there. So how do we, how do we protect that public information for like positions or things that we, they're input on more than administrative items? Oh, again, these are just questions that I'm also I think if we wanted to comment on administrative items, we have to find a way of encouraging people to participate in the item.
I agree.
I think to your point, Commissioner Bell, I mean, it's, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but anytime we do a legislative item, we have to put it through a public hearing process. And that's when that public notice will go out. But the thing is, is getting each individual, I mean, it goes in the newspaper, it goes, Charlie, you can explain that.
Yeah, so newspaper county website as well as the state public notice website, which the, the tools are pretty powerful. I mean, they're government tools, so sometimes they're a little challenging to use. But if you subscribe to the planning division on the Utah Public Notice website, you're going to get every agenda that's going to be posted. Just a matter of knowing that and messaging that. How does anybody know anything anymore if they're not looking at Facebook or Instagram or something like that, right? And we have chatted a little bit with our social media outreach group about the possibility of doing this. It's just price tag to use them to try and target specific audiences was challenging to overcome.
Is it cheaper to do that or send out mailing notices?
Definitely cheaper to do that than send out mailing notices. So for example, we sent out five thousand notices in the Ogden Valley when we did the Ogden Valley general plan, because we didn't want anyone to say that they didn't get, they didn't know about it, even though we still had time to say that. But we spent, uh, three thousand dollars to do that. So if we were to do that every single meeting, Wes, that
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, we're going to move on from that subject because it's time to start the meeting. So I'll call the, uh, call to order our Western Weber County Planning Commission on Tuesday, August 10th. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Now, let's see, roll call. It looks like everyone is present except for Commissioner Jed McCormick. And so he's excused. I'm sure it has something to do with the fair. So we'll go on with our approval of the minutes for April 14th, July 14th, 2020. April 13th, March 9th, and July 13th of 2021. There was one correction that was brought up in our pre-meeting noted.
Chair, I had another correction that I wanted to bring up. I reviewed the July 19th minutes and one of the, um, the last, on page six of those minutes. The last motion is one that I made, and so it, it was important to me that, um, we had, um, right information going into it to the public of why, why we made the motion and why those of us approved it. And I just found it wasn't quite accurate to the conversation and I, I went and listened to the transcript. I hate to belabor this. I know it's, it's just a, a detail, but I think it's important because the, um, the minutes, I don't think reflect the conversation well enough to understand the motion that was made. So it was from one hour and fifty-seven minutes to two hours and five minutes. And it kind of starts with Commissioner Wickert states, and, and when I was reading that, I remembered it slightly different, so I went back and listened to it. But, um, just the, the discussion, and I'm not sure how to address this, whether we table these minutes and review that section later, or how do we do that?
So if you have amendments to the minutes as proposed here, you can discuss these items. And if everyone agrees, you can approve the minutes with whatever changes or amendments you want to include in.
Okay, it's a little bit extensive. That's why I, I'm worried. So the notes that I, I made, do you want, do you want me to go through them or say that? Okay.
Let's go ahead and go through the process.
Okay, so it, it says that Commissioner Wickert states that it is like developing an island. And, um, in listening to the transcript, it's, I said Commissioner Wickert states, this development appears to create an island. Charlie responds with the existing development demographics.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
You, you said, uh, July 19th.
Sorry, July 13th, the very last.
May 21.
Yes, yes, the very last one. It's on page five is where my comments are. So if you look at the one, two, three. I'm so sorry, the fourth paragraph on page five, the end of that fourth paragraph is through, um, that motion. It's just that section right there that I think needs to be elaborated a little bit. Oh, okay, so it says, um, it appears to create an island and Charlie responds with the existing development demographics. And that's where it says in our minutes, thirty homes on either side of the road, on two acre lots on one side and forty-five hundred square foot lots on the other side. He also, um, Charlie also adds that many proposals are coming in for development in that area. And Commissioner Andreaati, and you can, um, correct me, but from the transcript, I wrote Commissioner Andreaati believes east of this proposal is a good development area for Warren. This development can help produce east-west rows to facilitate other development in the area. There isn't farmland in the area. That's what I got from the transcript. Um, and then Charlie, as Charlie sees this area as the center of a future village because sewer is closely available. Also, Charlie says other businesses are interested in the area and homes will need to be available for workers. Charlie adds, this development will allow more septic systems to more, to move to sewer. And the last note they had is that I saved knowing that utilities are close to the proposed development is key. For those that be the adjustments to the discussion that I'd like to add, and I think it's, um, is important to understanding why the motion was made.
Commissioner.
Currently, they're just, uh, three sentences for that whole area. And, um, I don't think they really convey the intent of the conversation there. And I can bring him the notes of the section and my suggestions that you can consider to decide what's appropriate, that possible?
And I saw one other thing here, and I'm not sure. It's got the chair seconding the motion to open the public hearing. You might want to check that as well. So that's another item of this. I agree. Let's, it was every, was, did anybody have any, any issues or, or comments further on the other minutes?
Just fixing that one on April 13th, we discussed in the pre-meeting. Chair and vice chair on that one. Reviewing that set of minutes and taking the chair off my name.
Okay, that was on March 9th. Okay, so we're going to go ahead then. Do we, do we need to do any, any procedural thing on that? If we just go ahead and approve, oh, I just leave him that last.
You can just approve and leave that one off. Approve the other minutes specifically and leave that one.
Okay, Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve April 14th, 2020, July 14th, 2020, April 13th, 2021, March 9th, 2021. Meetings with the few minor corrections and then we remove the July 13 minutes. Have them review before we approve them. We are going to go procedural. Then I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? She passes. Very good. Okay. All right, we'll move on to administrative items. Item number two on our agenda. LVM 04222021, request for preliminary approval of mountain, land and livestock subdivision located approximately nineteen hundred south, seventy-five hundred west. Consists of twenty-one lots in the A2 zone.
Commissioner. Just a little bit of a recap. I know that you all are familiar with a lot average subdivision. This section of our code allows for subdivisions that have various sizes of lots. It also allows for various widths, as long as all of the lots within that subdivision meet the minimum for the zone. Which for the A2 zone, single-family residential lots require a minimum of a hundred fifty feet and forty thousand square feet. We've got a range in this subdivision of lots from twenty-two thousand square feet up to a hundred six thousand square feet. Couple of things to note here. You have in your packet, um, some of the requirements for preliminary approval. We do require a capacity assessment letter regarding culinary water. And that has been provided from West Warren, Warren Water. And if you look through there, they do have requirements to address secondary water before they will issue a will serve letter. Um, our staff, our staff recommendation includes getting a will serve letter before we come before you for final approval. And I believe the applicant is, the applicant is here, in case you guys have any questions, Mr. Price is here. The secondary water proposal comes from water shares that Mr. Price currently holds. He has discussed installing, um, at least one pond. And I know that he's spoken with engineering regarding stormwater and how that water would be pressurized to service the lots within the subdivision for secondary water. If you have more detailed questions, he's here to answer that for you if you like. Um, he's also received feasibility letter from the Weaver Morgan Health Department regarding his lots. There are some details in there. As you can see, the lots have been broken out. I think it's lot twenty that requires some additional information, and so we will require an updated feasibility to address some of those lots in there before we come for final. And that maybe I'll have to check and see if we need to address that before a recommendation for final or before we go before the county commission. I'm not sure Charlie knows that off the top of his head.
One thing on that too.
Yes.
Probably need to update that letter. That letter states that it's under the Peterson Pipeline Water Improvement District two.
Oh, yes.
I just, just to make sure we're talking on the same stuff.
Right, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Um, the other thing to note with this is that this, um, this particular proposal is located off of seventy-five hundred west. Seventy-five hundred west is a dead end road. It actually dead ends just, I'm going to say a mile or two south. Um, our code requires that we, we, we don't allow development actually off of substandard bed-in county roads. So we are working with the developer and other developers within the area to try and get some infrastructure extended specifically along eighteen hundred south. And as you can see on here, the applicant, and again, we're working with fire district on this as well as engineering, is proposing an egress road along what would be eighteen hundred south to this railroad crossing there. That would be considered an emergency egress road. And as development continues along here, and we've got some interest for industrial development, then this proposed fire road would be improved to county standard. The idea is to extend it to the east across the river and until it connects with the already existing eighteen hundred south river.
Is where your cursor is positioned, is that, is that eighteen hundred?
It's approximately right about here.
Okay. So it's, no, that's fine. It's a little closer to where the, the proposed West Weaver corridor crosses the river.
We've got trouble with a steady hand and talking at the same time with this.
No, that's perfectly fine. I just want to make sure that we kind of have an idea of where that runs.
You have any questions for me before I outline staff's recommendations?
Timmy, I do have a question. So I I'm trying to understand. So maybe we have that length, two point nine miles, that angle, that's not, that's not where the road is planned on being.
That's just bird's eye view.
The distance. So.
It would come, Commissioner Wickert, it would come somewhere along here, because I think there's an existing farm road along there.
Okay.
And then it would follow roughly some parcel boundaries and jog.
Okay, so it'll follow roughly that line, but with existing very roads.
Right, exactly.
Is, is it proposed that that would go in before the development begins or when do they plan on putting that emergency egress in?
We, at minimum, we would escrow for that, but I believe the developer does have to install at least a portion of it, make it at least feasible for a, a fire truck to be able to travel along there and be able to allow for those twenty-one lots for emergency egress.
So right now we've got what, forty something homes along that road, seven five hundred west, adding another twenty-one. Without some kind of emergency egress, that's a scary deal.
So the requirement before they go before county commission is to secure that through easements, recorded easements, actually. We would escrow for anything that isn't installed, and Charlie may have more detail, but I believe we would have minimum installation requirements to be able to accommodate a fire truck in traffic from that area.
That's right. The infrastructure, twenty feet wide, all-weather surface to support a seventy-five thousand pound fire apparatus would be installed with these subdivision improvements.
The question on that, Charlie, would they have to build that to county standard so that when they do eventually get to the permanent configuration of that road, it would be already, they wouldn't have to tear it out and rebuild it?
Um, we're not requiring that at this time, uh, for the entire three miles. It's quite a bit to build the full standard. So that's why we went with the twenty-foot wide, um, all-weather surface. Now, when it comes to, um, compaction and all that, uh, my guess is to get to that seventy-five thousand pound, uh, standard, you're going to be right about the same compaction, but afterward. But afterward, converse with our county engineer to verify. Regardless, it'll be either the applicant or future owners in that area who want to retrofit it if it doesn't meet the standard.
That was, I guess, more my question, that they're going to build it to county road standards, the cross section at least, you know, as far as base and everything up, other than the asphalt.
We'll work with engineers to figure out exactly what their standard is going to need to be. The right of way width will be county standard, that's for sixty six.
So is there an improvement also along seventy five hundred west that's part of this as well?
They will need to bring seventy five hundred west up to county standard, yes.
From nine hundred south?
No, just along the front of their development. I will tell you that with future phases that run along that eighteen hundred south at that point, as those future phases come in, then they will be required to bring that section of road up to county standard.
So right now, when we look at this one plot map here, so really just basically lot one, those two future lots is what they got to bring up to standard?
Right, let me show you something.
See, that's future development under the same name. So when that comes in, that's when they'll
Yeah. Yeah, there is. Oh, let me make sure I'm sharing here. Let me show you kind of an outline. And I think this may, there may be maybe a little fluid, but this is roughly what you're looking at, the future development, is that okay?
Yeah. I have a curiosity question. And I'm not trying to muddy up this particular item, but it's, it's in general for this whole area, because we're going to be depending on this egress for multiple developments. So going forward, we know that eventually it's going to build out a road approximately eighteen hundred south. But in the meantime, before that's a hard surface in a, in county dedicated. Who maintains that? Who keeps the snow off of it in the winter time? Who keeps the trees from growing up in the middle of it during the summertime? And so that there's a constant, you know, way to getting.
Can be used for an egress.
Right, that's a good question. Generally, the owner is responsible for maintaining that until it's dedicated to the county.
Who's the owner? That's a three mile stretch.
John Price.
You own all that way, all Sorry, I don't, I don't mean to speak out of turn, but that seems, that's a lot of land out there, but if, I guess if they own it, then they own.
Can, do you, would you like to give us some comment? Yeah, yeah. Give us your name and address, you know.
John Price, six forty six south, seven nine hundred west, West Warren. And yeah, so we, I at least saw that ground anyways and maintain it as it is. I have a snow power business actually, so we'll be able to, I'm out there all the time. Anyways, so be, I won't say easy, but it'll be, it won't be an issue for me to run a blade across there. That's, you know, and there's snow and everything like that as well, because I've got their chicken cows anyways, so.
All the way out to the proposed railroad crossing?
Yeah, the whole place I got.
Okay.
So my home is on that.
I will say a development agreement typically addresses maintenance of those things as well.
My, I guess, comments more in general and just in the area, but just like the same concern I had on with the, with the rezon across the street. We're going down to a railroad crossing that still isn't a public railroad crossing. And, you know, there's nothing for them guys to block that, that off. Last week, the crossing that they were proposed to use further to the east there. My, my tractor and baler sat behind a train for three days and we couldn't get it out. Because they just parked the train on it, you know, when the yard gets full. So what's there to say? There's no guarantee that we're going to build this three mile road, have an access, there's not going to be a train sitting on it. That's my concern with this thing, and it's unfortunate, but you know, they're not going to block a public crossing as they would one of these private crossings.
What, what is the crossing down there at ten thousand lot? Is it more of a private crossing or is it more of a public crossing?
Yeah, it's much more of a rural crossing. Charlie, have you been out that way?
Yeah, I have been. So there's a sign that says this is a private crossing. The county owns the right of way going across from nine hundred south down to the sewer lagoons. And so the term private, sounds like it might be a little bit more loosely interpreted. But I think what the railroad is saying is this is our private property. And so public access is not available. However, it's a stop sign. It's not gated like the crossing to the east is. And so you get free ability to cross, and we've got the public who goes duck hunting down that road pretty routinely. So it'd be hard, I think, to take a longstanding stance that that is private, but I think the railroad will certainly try to do so.
It's definitely a, I mean, public access is that all the time. So I, I get where you're coming from, but at the same time, I've also rode every single day of my life. Quite often. I, I mean, longest I've sat there is thirty minutes while I wait for, not days. So that's, but, but there is a there is a train that comes and uses that quite frequently and stops along periods of time. But even, even at a thirty minute wait, at least they have a better access, so. My concern is just the expense to, I mean, three miles of a road, even though we're only building it twenty feet wide. I mean, that's some pretty wet ground out through there. Well, there's got to be a lot of infrastructure brought in to build that road up to sustain that weight. You know, would we be better off pushing that money towards that bridge? Then we don't have that issue.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a possibility to work in that direction. If the applicant would rather do so. I liked the idea that the applicant was kind of working independently of the other applicant, just because it provides two ways. Now, both ways, the temporary direction to the east is still going to a crossing that, like you say, you could get a train on there for quite some time. So both directions goes to one of those crossings. And that's why we've worked with both applicants to, maybe we fully discuss this part, to put a certain amount of dollars aside per lot that's recorded and a certain amount of dollars aside per building permit that is issued. Now, this won't be an impact fee to the traditional or to the legal definition of an impact fee. This is a project improvement fee, because it's directly associated with the need of this project and the other projects in the area. And so with that money, we'd have a little bit of supply to continue to go eastward. If there is a way to get synergy and everybody throws their, their hat into, you know, nobody does any temporary egresses and everybody pushes towards the river and builds a bridge. I mean, that would be, I think, an ideal outcome. It's just a matter of getting money to do that. And unless, you know, UDOT comes and saves our bacon or the county finds some money somewhere that maybe the trillion dollar
Just passed it today.
Yeah, transportation plan will throw some money our way. And it's possible it throws some, our, some money our way. However, I've already heard from the county engineer, we've got plenty of bridges that need to be replaced, let alone new bridges being built. Chances are, unless we get some kind of development activity out here, we're just not going to have the funds to. Double edged sword, I guess.
The only concern that I have going that direction is that I want to make sure that we're not going to piggyback east side of seventy five hundred and the west side of seventy five hundred. So that, so that when the applicant comes back with the proposed east of seventy five hundred, he's, he's going to come back and say, well, this applicant has already proposed going west, so we're going to piggyback on to hit. Because then we're not going to get anywhere. This has got to go both directions, in my opinion. This has got to, this is, this is, this development here, he's proposing going west. And anything east of seventy five hundred, in my opinion, needs to go east. And, and they can't piggyback off of each other and say, well, one's already there. I don't like that idea because it brings right around what Commissioner Edwards said about potential blocking with the train, at least in the, in the foreseeable future. Until those crossings are closed, or excuse me, opened up to public access, more the way we define it, a public crossing, gates and lights and so.
In, in the event they ever become that, the railroad is really challenging to work with all that. I think our ideal outcome is just going to be a bridge over the river. And both of these roads are a little bit of a stopgap to get to that point. I don't know what it's going to take to get the railroad to acknowledge a crossing at ten thousand one hundred to be a public crossing, but I do know they like to close other crossings before they will allow a new public crossing.
But, but that substantiates my point of pushing eighteen hundred south. Because we know that the railroad's not going to ever really probably be a viable fully public crossing in either location. And so that's why I want to see this, this thing progress so that it doesn't just go one direction. And we see a piggyback effect. It needs to go both directions because that's going to drive the push for eighteen hundred getting completed or started and completed.
Yeah, I agree. Diversification, I thought, was a really good outcome with both of these applicants kind of going in opposite directions. If one applicant does come and say, well, they've already solved the problem, let's, let's continue to go that way. We already know that that crossing at ten thousand one hundred is not a public crossing. So that doesn't solve the, the need to create a public street in that area, even though eighteen hundred might be public until you get there. And it might be public after you get to the crossing, crossing that is not public. And so either way, we're going to be asking both applicants to throw money into a pot so we can push to the eastern crossing.
So if there's going to be businesses go out there, more business and everything, we have to have another way east instead of west street. To me, that's a, that needs to be on the board somewhere too, that we need to
That's exactly right. So we're looking at eighteen hundred because eighteen hundred through West Haven will actually snake down to Wilson Lane, which is so it'll be interchange to, like, or to West Weaver interchange to all the way out west for eighteen hundred, if we could follow that. If we can't get out across the river there and we end up crossing the river where UDOT wants to cross it for the future corridor, then it would be eighteen hundred snaking down to twenty five fifty, which would still go out to the regions.
Chair, I have another question for Charlie, likely for Charlie. So, or, or maybe for Tammy. Seventy five hundred right now is not a standard road, but it is adequate for the current development. Is that what I understand?
Yeah. County has an inventory of their substandard roads. And this is not quite make it onto that list. So there's a little bit of improvement that needs to occur, a bit of width that needs to be added. But the county specifically and the engineers feel it's sufficient to service this subdivision.
So, I mean, just this small part of the subdivision won't put it over the board. But what happens when more of this subdivision goes in and seventy five hundred is no longer adequate? What happens then?
You take that one, Charlie?
That's where the goal is to go east. And we, we're having a hard time figuring out exactly what that trigger is to start building eastward, other than collecting funds. We're going to be looking to WACOG next year to fund a bridge over the river and either eighteen hundred or twenty five fifty, whichever it, it may be. But at the end of the day, I mean, if we've got nothing but seventy five hundred and that's the only way in and out, we're going to be looking to any developer in that area to provide improvements along seventy five hundred. So when you're looking to phase two and three, well, actually, when you're looking at the future phases, we will have a code in place by that time, which is the final evolution, hopefully, of the substandard single access road issue. And that is essentially that the requirement is to design, essentially redesign the road to full standard, the entire roadway. Now, is that going to fall on the back of one applicant? Perhaps not. So once you've got the design of the roadway, you can get it at cost estimate. Once you have the cost estimate, you could divide what the full build out is along that roadway by or, or the cost by what the full build out is. That way you get a cost per linear frontage of every lot. And then whether it's a lot that's on that road or that just gets access from that road, like other ones in this phase, we could turn to an applicant and say the per lot cost to get access to and from your development is this much. So you need to put that much money into seventy five hundred. And so you got seventy five hundred money going towards improvements on seventy five hundred, and you've got money going towards improvements on eighteen.
So I guess how does that work when, I mean, we've got quite a stretch of seventy five hundred with applicants who aren't currently developing? And they've got a lot of frontage and they're one person using, you know, three hundred feet of road versus, I don't know how many lots are here, twenty people. Yeah, twenty one people accessing, I don't even know how much that is, two hundred feet of road. How does, how does that work? If they never develop them, they never get the, the funds to improve the road?
So we know that someone will develop, and someone is developing. So we're looking at twenty one homes right now. Let's just say we have the ordinance in place right now. We would take the cost estimate of what it takes to improve seventy five hundred from nine hundred south all the way down to where the road intersects, this, this new subdivision road intersects with seventy five hundred. Take the full cost of that divided by what the full build out is, is along that avenue road and apply it to each of those twenty one. And so you're not just improving the, the road space in front of where that development is. You're actually going further down seventy five hundred with every new lot that you're adding to that, well, traffic to that road. So as the developer goes to, you know, phase two and looks to get fifty lots or a hundred lots out of it, every single one of those lots will be paying into providing improvements on seventy five eventually from where that subdivision accesses seventy five, all the way back to nine hundred will be fully improved, at least on that side.
But it doesn't require development along the entire length for that to happen?
No, it doesn't. At some point in time, we'll have one developer have, potentially one developer have remodeled the entire roadway or reconstruct the entire roadway. And that's to the benefit of every other landowner that's out there. It just so happens that it's that developer who's creating the impact that's going to be.
Well, it's proportionate to the traffic that they're placing on the road.
That's exactly right.
The increase in traffic. So it's to the next level of standard.
That's right. Now, keep in mind, across the street and closer to the tracks, there is at least a hundred lots being proposed in that rezon. And so from nine hundred all the way to where those one hundred lots get access to seventy five hundred, every one of those hundred lots are going to have to put money into seventy five hundred as well.
But in the meantime, it's subdivision by subdivision, and they just currently have to improve what's right there.
Until that ordinance gets adopted.
But they are putting money towards the
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred and seventy five hundred. There is money going towards seventy five hundred as well, from what I understand.
So the money going towards seventy five hundred is going to be just the width of the existing development until that section of code gets adopted. Once that section of code gets adopted, which, again, we're on that.
Oh, okay, I see. It's not until that section of code is adopted and that's why it's current.
That's why this one doesn't have that obligation.
Yeah, I'm on board. I was trying to figure out. Okay, so eventually, that's how.
In the meantime, it's, it's this portion of the subdivision that gets improved with the subdivision. And, you know, depending on how fast this goes, it could be the next, you know, the next potential here going to the north back toward the tracks. But, you know, hopefully, in the near future, we'll have the code in place.
Okay. For the additional traffic on the road.
Anything else?
So for the purposes of this subdivision, this application, we are applying on an emergency egress headed west to ten thousand west crossing the tracks. That emergency egress will be maintained by the applicant or the owner of the road. He sells it, then it'd be for whoever else owns it, right?
Correct.
Care of in the development agreement.
Correct.
Along with the maintenance of the road. Commissioner?
Uncomfortable, or this is just one.
Anything else? Okay, I'll ask for motion. Here, I'll make a motion. We grant preliminary approval to Mountain View land, Mountain View's land and livestock subdivision, a lot average subdivision consisting of twenty one lots located at approximately nineteen hundred south, seventy five hundred west in Oregon. This recommendation is subject to all review agency requirements and the following conditions, which I have edited, so. Hopefully you guys are okay with my edits to the conditions. Prior to scheduling final approval with the planning commission, Warren, West Warren Warren Water must issue a will serve letter. This next one, I'm going to kind of tweak a little bit, just because I'd like to see this. This next one, I'm gonna kind of tweak a little bit just because I'd like to see this come before us before it moves on as well. And this is prior that prior to final approval with the planning commission, a secondary egress is that we can see the right away line and that it's secured and that the applicant has mutually agreed with the applicant and the county on that line. But the development agreement can come prior to recording. And item number three, a table must be shown on the final plat showing lot area and widths for all lots within the subdivision, along with the calculated average for each lot. It must be noted under the name of the subdivision that this is a lot average subdivision on the final plat. Um I added a fourth condition and this is kind of based on what we just talked to Tammy about. An updated letter from the health department be obtained. Just clarifying those couple lots that they were still looking for some stuff on. This recommendation is based on the following findings. The proposed subdivision conforms with the Western Weaver general plan. And the proposed subdivisions complies with the applicable county ordinances. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion in the side. Commissioner Wickern.
Hi.
Commissioner Andy Wada. Commissioner Bell.
Hi.
Commissioner Edwards.
Hi.
Commissioner Nielsen.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Unanimously, thank you very much. Move on to the next agenda. ER twenty twenty one dash oh five, consideration in action on design review approval for Weber storage sheds at approximately eighteen hundred blue and white. And I believe that's probably more like eighteen fifty blue and white.
Uh actually nineteen fifty seven.
Okay, sorry. I was going the wrong way.
You're a little off when we put the agenda even together. I apologize. When they know we found it was a little bit closer to.
Seven.
Can I pull up a landscape plan uh for this proposal mostly because it shows just about everything in the nutshell in the image? And we can dive into it's yeah, it's hard to see. There's a lot of detail going on. We can zoom in and fly around on this image when I don't know if you need to. Okay, so commissioners, this is a uh request for design review approval of what we call the Weber storage sheds. And approximately eighteen fifty seven north, Blue on White Boulevard in the uh industrial park on uh vacant parcel in the M one zone. Uh the project area is a little over three acres, is three point two six acres. Right now it's vacant. Proposed uses uh indoor personal storage, which is an allowed use, a permitted use in the M one zone. And what is being proposed by the applicant is multiple buildings for personal storage. The structures will be primarily constructed of color matched decorative recently stone with cement block along the foundations of Blue on White Boulevard. So it's the front um facades. Color matched metal sheeting sites uh on the sides of the buildings. And then decorative missionary stone and our cement block on the rear facades of the building. Roofs will be a standard uh galvalume metal roofing. And we'll go into more detail on those materials as the applicant has brought more details to present. Uh but in the nutshell, that's what the proposal is. Uh we've got a couple of different buildings, um a total of about eight thousand square feet. Close space. Um ju- jumping into this, this uh particular project is before you for design review because of its scale. Anything that exceeds ten thousand square feet and square footage or disturbs more than an acre in area needs to come to the planning commission for design review. So this proposal meets both of those thresholds. Um look into a couple of things for designer view, um a little bit further down, but primarily um before we jump into that, I want to talk about the zoning and site development standards for the M one zone. So um like we'd indicated, the M one zone does allow for this as the permitted use. The development standards require that we have a lot that's at least a hundred feet wide. The the uh subject parcel or lot is three hundred and forty seven point eight five feet wide. Uh the minimum front yard setback on this particular road, because it is an eighty foot wide right of way, is a fifty foot front yard setback. Uh the proposal does show the first structure being fifty seven feet back, so I mean that front step back. Uh side yard, and they are allowed to be up to five feet away from the side yard and lot planes. However, this parcel does have a ten foot public utility easement on that south property line. So you'll notice that that structure is set back just a little bit more to accommodate that easement as compared to the north property line. Now, the rear property uh line is allowed to be a zero foot setback, and that's what they're proposing is to set that rear building up against the property line. And then from a building height standard, um they are allowed to be up to thirty five feet in height. However, what is proposed is about half of that, about sixteen feet. I've gone too tall. And this particular zone also has a lot coverage ratio not to exceed eighty percent. Total up the uh the acreage, you know, the building area, we find that they're at about fifty seven point seven on the coverage that we did there as well. Yes, in your case, sometimes this microphone is hard to tell. So we're meeting all the standards as far as the site layout is concerned in the zoning environments. Um jumping into design review, we we do this process um to ensure that the general design layout and appearance appearance of commercial sites and buildings is orderly and harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood. Jump out of this real quick and show you the street view so you get a sense of what is in the vicinity. We'll go to the aerial first and then we'll go to the street view. Okay. So uh you can see the the subject site in red there. Um so just to the north, we have the ERKA Monterey Park Facility. And this uh this lot is owned by Monterey Park. It's like they're they're selling off this weekend personally. Uh across the street, we've got Kimberly Clark to the south there, we've got KBR Roofing. To the west, you have a storage, I guess I should say, a detention facility, detention pond. And then further south, we have some residential um parcels, so that's a hop, skip and a jump. To the next. Okay, so from the street view, you can see there is curb gutter uh in installed, no sidewalk yet. And you'll notice that it's a condition of approval. We do have a sidewalk as a referral. And as we plan, on the left here, you can see that KBR roofing facility. And then further to the east is, sorry, east is across the street, so directly behind this used to be the car. And then to the north, so to the right here is where that ERKA Monterey Park facility is. Okay, looking at the site plan from a traffic safety and traffic congestion perspective, the site is laid out with a primary access. Here's your primary access gated access, and then it's kind of this round loop for people to come in and come out of the facility. Uh but they are proposing to have um a crash gate on the north side to allow for emergency access when there's a fire and need to second access points. So this this portion here of landscaping will be a harder surface that will allow for emergency vehicles to traverse. Looking at this, we might need to remove a brush or two for landscaping. They don't like scratches on their trucks, I'm sure. But in an emergency, they will be able to crash through this gate that is proposed. So this this particular use, again, personal storage, so people will be coming and going periodically um to access their units. But as far as a a parking perspective, there's four uh standard parking stalls and then one BDA stall shown as well, so a total of five stalls for patrons to come and visit the leasing office and customer service and what have you. Um in our parking requirements, personal storage is not a use that's listed in the table, so it's kind of up to the planning commission to use the best judgment as to how many spaces is needed. We feel that this is is probably right in the most adequate. Yes.
That proposed building in the middle, is that uh I imagine there's first.
Yeah, there will be um. We don't have an internal layout as far as access and egress and the building itself other than knowing that this is the roof structure, so there's likely.
So I imagine that most most people accessing their lockers are gonna park within that circular driveway, right? So I think, and is parking permitted along Blue on White? Temporary parking.
Temporary.
Right.
That's a good question. I don't believe that it is technically permitted. And in the winter time, obviously, when there's a snow removal ordinance in effect, you can't park there, but um I'm not sure if that if businesses are allowed to use street frontage parking. I'm sure if anybody else knows of that. We can look into it for sure. All right. The trackers. Do you have any other questions on circulation and then traffic? We don't anticipate there being congestion on Blue on White, and it will increase the traffic, obviously, but.
No, I think to my point, my point was is just pointing out that I think four parking spots is probably plenty. And probably stay vacant most of the time. Might be used mainly for whoever's manning the leasing office.
Yep.
Is anyone gonna be living? I know sometimes these places have someone that lives in that leasing office. Is this one set up that way?
So we have not received a proposal to use it as such.
The night watchman quarters.
Yeah, it is a permitted use and in the zones, they could, you know, come back with another application to add some glowing space in that. Okay, any other questions on traffic circulation? Okay. Uh outdoor advertising, uh right now, the applicant has not submitted any signage plans for review. So we've indicated that if they intend to put up signage, which we believe eventually they will, um they need to submit a new application and we'll review the signage separately from this proposal. Um landscaping is kind of where the rubber hits the road on this a little bit more so than the advertising, but um the design review chapter has a set number of criteria points and need to meet. And then reviewing the proposed landscape plan, they meet the minimum standard of at least ten percent of the area being uh escaped. They are limited to the amount of turf grass that allowed, but they are not proposing to refresh everything in between the plantings and the shins to be a decorative rock. And all of the plantings are going to be irrigated by drip irrigation, which meets the intent of having a low warning message. Um staff did request a slight modification to the landscaping plan you see in your packet. And my concern was the landscaping along these long linear facades um will be used to screen that. Um the the initial proposal had some smaller um plantings, such as coral forest or grasses, which don't be allowed to cover the ground. And so they submitted enough data to landscape. Which is here. And at first glance, it's really hard to tell the differences, but when you look a little bit closer to details, uh the plantings on the side property lines are of a different species that have a higher reach and a longer spread. And I wanted to show you what these actually look like because it's very tough and on the north property line. So these guys right here, you can kind of see in group compares of three. What is proposed is that they use what's called the Bailey's Red Twig Dogwood, which um you can see here as an example. Wish we had Rick and his landscape architecture skills with us to tell us just how tall these are gonna get, but you can't see that he gets fairly tall and it does spread out fairly wide. In addition.
Six eight feet tall.
Do they? So it'll cover the facade wall pretty well. Uh then in in addition to that dogwood, they're also proposing a Hicks angled Japanese view, which looks like you can like hedges that you can kind of trim and shape. On the south property line, in place of seasonal grasses like the coral forest, they've re-proposed to use what's called Utah Service Berry. Uh it's another kind of bush style plant with flowers. And as well, my south property line, including a black knight, other than bush. Some colored and greeted and also things. With some screening. So um that was what was resubmitted. The south property lands, these facades can get pretty monotonous. Along the front property land, we have some variation in architecture as well as facades and quite a few trains. Screen from here. And while we're at the on the topic, let me go to the proposed renderings.
Can I ask one question real quick?
Absolutely.
So with that updated plan you got, that takes care of item number one on the staff recommendations.
On the recommendations, yeah. If you guys are okay with what was proposed, then that satisfies staff's request to. I'm going to pull up the recently submitted um renderings of the facades. So these will differ slightly from what's in your staff report. Okay, so we asked that they provide us a little bit more detail on what these, uh what the leasing office is going to be. So like we had indicated, these this is just a single story building um you know, storefront, so to speak, for people to come in and talk about the leasing agent and or resolving customer service issues in here. Um in the original renderings, it was kind of just a blank box to fill in with moving type plans, but this is what was submitted as far as that frontage service. This east elevation is what will be facing Blue on White Boulevard. And you'll have the applicant provide the the color palette and the materials that they propose about help bring this to life in a little bit. But from an architectural standpoint, um looking at the structure with appears to be a false facade, I imagine some advertising and signage makeup on the structures. Except for the sub motto. That's what the leasing office is proposing.
I see this right, that office layout, looks like the men's room opens up outside. Women can go inside to use the restroom.
I called it that myself.
That's how it appears. While we're talking, while we're talking about restrooms, we you do need to have a will serve letter from Central Eversource. That's one of the conditions that the engineering department has requested, so just FYI. Let's look at the other renderings here real quick. So uh your your previous renderings didn't show this this office building. It was kind of just that blank box like you'd indicated, but you can tell that the storage units definitely have a monotonous facade, so. You can tell that the storage units definitely have a monotonous facade. So imagine there's landscaping in front of these to help screen review on both the sides. The rear is going to be a zero lot line setback. So we go back up on that. Attention on so the rear facade is really not much going on. So that screening isn't as needed. The next one. So here's the color rendering of. Of the leasing office. Last get the applicant to provide us a little more of a narrative. There's a little bit more from that rule on white frontage. You know, a little bit of a two tone wall and then we've got a little bit of color breaking up the leasing office. Here's that crash gate for the emergency vehicles if if needed, but primary intentions and deeply. Any questions on landscaping or facades?
I think it'll fit in well with all the other huge buildings that are just blocks sitting in the area.
Pretty big buildings. That's right. Okay, moving on to the site and.
That's true.
And building layout, we kind of already went through this as far as the zoning and the site development standards, but it does meet those standards. The two conditions of approval that are listed there, if if you guys are okay with what was submitted, could be satisfied by what was reviewed today. So the recommendation of more detailed architectural elevation, also more from color palette. As far as the utility easements drainage and other engineering questions, the engineering division has done review on this. There are some conditions of approval, like we mentioned, we need to get it connected to central receiver. They do need to provide us with stormwater calculations. Which that water will be entering the storm drain system that exists in the area. We do need to have a calculation that's green image. And it won't be required to retain some water on site that can be done in underground scrimmage vaults, which is part of landscaping in that front setback. So we need some information. And so the, the only utility easements are along the front edge and then on that south property, which they become even for. Public utilities. But as far as the review with the planning review and recommendation. We do want to have a deferral agreement for the. The front property line, when we review these for design review. There is a requirement that they have curb gutter and sidewalk and sidewalk can be referred with. Is a reasonable request and there is no sidewalk to tie you to this. So we believe the defer makes sense to have. So we will ask for every full agreement to make a condition that we will not any future signage to come back to this for additional designer review. Now, we do make our recommendation based on the findings that it does play with chemical code and it is in compliance with the general. Just any other questions we fully ask the applicant to provide some information on your materials and picture.
Just a clarification on the recommendations. One, two, and three are satisfied.
If you guys are okay with what was submitted, then staff would.
And then we need to add will serve letter from central labor and engineering requirements for stormwater.
So that was kind of wrapped up in that first little header sentence where we always say that our reviews are subject to approval to the various agencies and engineering being being one of them. If you look at the project on frontier, there's a couple of those engineering questions that need satisfying.
So we don't need it in our conditions. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
The deferral for the sidewalk. That's the, the rest of the subdivision that there's evolved into, right?
Yeah, there's, there's no sidewalk to tie into. There's curb and gutter. So that's already been satisfied under online. The sidewalk, if we ever feel like it's a necessity, then we can ask them to put that in.
There's a lot of pedestrian traffic out there.
You know, amazing there actually is people walking a lot out there and you get those big trucks coming in and out of associated and going both directions and moving south on New and White. It's a little bit weird. A lot of people. Well, they get out and walk on their lunch.
They walk into restaurants nearby instead.
Yeah, yeah, actually moving along 2700 there, but.
Well, how does that work? I assume all the neighboring. Lots of have also have it deferred, right? So what happens if we want to do?
I don't necessarily think that that's something that I would recommend on this project since the rest of them have been deferred, but I hate it.
So that's a good question and it's been a topic of discussion internally for quite a while, but the way that we draft our, our deferral agreements indicate that. If the county wants, we can call up on the referral and they have 60 days to install it, which is harsh, but. It also reads that if the county decides to put in an improvement district or a taxing district to pay for improvements in the neighborhood. But they would not protest that formation of district and potential future taxation to pay for overtime. So there's those two options and to date. Today, the county hasn't called up any of these, but they could.
Yeah, I just, it's not fair to.
Yeah, that's, that's how I feel, but I just, I don't like that for I've never liked that.
So very seldomly, when it comes time, the county isn't going to call it due anyways. Have they ever?
Not, not that I know of. There are some that we've used as leverage in the other development proposals or sort of this is been deferred. It's kind of to make good on that as part of the future development. And once that Yaggy trio.
Yeah, we. And we have called on some as we are making improvements to streets. So when you look at 12th Street or 3550. Sorry, 3500. I think maybe even. Actually, there's been a few up in the Uentown Highlands area. Yep. So when we're making improvements to streets, we'll call it. In fact, I think we're looking at some of the ones on 3200 West.
The hard thing with those are not, I mean, not in this case. I mean, in this case, the owner's probably going to stay owning this, but. In a residential one, that's where it gets to a little bit.
No, I don't see any issues.
It's consistent with what we've done in the past, even if it isn't perfect. So if you'd like, we do have some, you know, materials and colors we could go over and the applicant. Lots of additional information.
Oh, come on. We're not that scary.
Hey, I'm Geneva Blanchard, 1352 West, 1050 North, Far West. Okay, first off, I apologize. I thought one of the uploads that I had showed for you that makes sense. And I know it didn't matter to you, but I, okay. Cause they were saying you, you guys couldn't see like the doorways and how they have the alleys.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I was just kind of, my point was just that. Yeah. If there's, if there's a hundred units in there, 200 units, it might bring more traffic. But either way, I think there's enough parking along that driveway.
No, I just wanted to make sure you had it.
I'm not concerned.
Okay. What do you guys want to know about exterior? We had, you obviously saw the office. Elevations. So we've brought some samples specifically about the fencing. I think that was the biggest concern of how that was going to look. Yes, between landscaping and the Mesa race stone. And color. And obviously the green based on the exterior. So we tried to put our best pieces together, but it's hard.
I appreciate it. So are you saying that this would be the stone as opposed to that beige color stone?
No, I couldn't, we couldn't find a color. It'll be these colors. We just did our best to find samples that you can see. It's not just a cement.
CMU block wall.
Yeah, exactly. And it'll look very nice in the front. And then all the front fencing will be like a iron or an iron rock black. So it'll look very nice.
It's not chain link?
It is not chain link in the front on the sides and the back.
Including the crash gate?
How far off of the building is the side fences? Five on the north, 10 on the south. Because of that utilitiesman on the south.
That's kind of.
Going to be. It's the least white one.
We'll give you all a discount if you want to start your stuff. Okay. I'll hold you to that or Brent will hold you to that.
I would not recommend.
Defer, there you go.
Did strike that. Commissioners.
I appreciate you bringing that stuff in and showing us and. It looks like it's going to be real nice.
Thank you.
I think I was more concerned with the screening and I think we saw some examples of that pretty good. Thank you.
Mr. Burks, anything else?
Nope. Just have any questions you might have.
Okay.
Seems pretty good to straightforward to me.
All right. I'll ask motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of filed DR 2021-05. Subject to all review, agency requirements and the following conditions. The deferral agreement must be signed and recorded by the applicant to ensure sidewalk is installed along the entire property. Line that above rule on White Boulevard at a time that is desired by the county and any future proposed signage will be reviewed through a separate design review patient. Recommendation for approval is based on the following findings that their proposal complies with all applicable county codes. And the proposed project conforms to the 2003 West Central general plan.
Have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Commissioner Nielsen.
I say aye.
Commissioner Bell.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrea. Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Wicker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Motion passage unanimously. Thank you very much. That does look really good, by the way. Thank you.
Thanks for sending to the meeting. You can stick around if you want.
Well, they don't leave. All right. Remarks are. From anyone public. Items not on agenda. There's those crickets again. Okay.
Have one. I don't know how this works, but I did have somebody call me and ask. The land. So they looked at the futures for the general plan and. Was planned to be plowed over and built into a road and a park apparently. Call me like I could do something about it, but either way, they called me and they wanted to come tonight and provide some public comment to this, but had an accident home. And then the evening in hospital with us. The concern is where does the land, how does, how does the county plan to acquire the land necessary? What happens when we want to expand 1800 so that these developments can take place? But the landowner, it would split his land right down the middle. And how does the county acquire his property if he doesn't want to? You're going to say that word that he doesn't want to hear.
Don't say it. We'll be here all night.
Bringing it up.
Put a microphone in my mouth. Well, first off, the requirement is willing buyer, willing seller negotiation. If they are unwilling to sell now, the county is probably not going to offer a huge amount over. Fair market value, but in some cases we offer a little bit here and there, just to kind of sweeten the deal. When it's a willing buyer, willing seller situation. If that doesn't work, it, it does go over to that dreaded word of imminent domain. In the event someone is unwilling to sell and the county feels like it's in that census of the public to do so. We don't do use that very often, but when we're looking at section line roads, looking at 1800. Most recent one that we've discussed, at least internally is 5100 West. Skyline Drive, they, they used imminent domain to create that connection. Up there because the seller did not want to sell. And so it does occur. It's unfortunate. Sometimes that has to occur. But we try not to.
Well, can we, can we pull the nose of the plane up just a little bit? And let's keep in mind that it's a plan. It's not in stone. It's not etched, you know, plans change by the time we get another plan that. That area may be reconsidered completely differently than it's being reconsidered for this plan. That's kind of how I, I, I think would be the first level of answer that I would give this person. And then, yeah, then we can jump into the, you know, the deep end of the pool with all the other detail about, you know, the imminent domain, but. You kind of hate to go there because I, you know, who knows what it'll be by the time that. It's time for that part to possibly be there. We might've went through another process of a general plan by then, or it might be a city by then, or it might be. So that's why I tend to kind of, you know, my answer would be just, you know, yeah, it ultimately can come to that, but you know, see where it goes first.
It's going to be drawn up in the new general plan. That land ever come available, let's say his family does want. Be where the rain goes. But if they dig in their heels and say, sorry, you're going to have to drag this road around our property.
It's possible too.
Yeah, at some point it's either going to be in the county's best interest to take it. Or the road all the way. Could have other. I think the reason I bring it up, he was going to speak to it himself, but the reason I bring it up because it is going to be something that's going to upset the public. Needs land are putting these roads through people's property and where we want to plan. As we put this general together, they're going to look at it like the county is trying to force their will on top of people and taking their land. And so.
Here's the response.
The thing is going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a debate and, and to be honest with you, I, I look at it like, hey, 1800 really is our. And how we get about it without the public is going to be, it's going to be a bit of a challenge.
Education. Yeah. And that's actually, that's the way that I would go about it. The county is not interested in taking a heavy approach in any circumstance. Sometimes we do, but we don't want to. And so the best thing that I've found is helpful for folks to say this, there's a reason there's a word general. General means we are generally speaking, this is, this is how we think it could be made out. That doesn't mean that that road's going to go right across your property. No, it doesn't necessarily mean that, especially if you do dig in. County is going to look at all the other options first and county is going to look to your neighbors and what they might want to develop first. We actually sit down pretty routinely and go over street connectivity, trying to figure out where roads could link up. And so that we can have that street master plan on a document, but at the end of the day. You know, maybe it's a, some of these are just exercises in the utility because the applicant comes in and says, you know what? I've got a better idea. We want to connect from here to here. And that might work, whatever their idea is, may work way better than what we've come up with or what we're seeing. So it's general, it's a guiding document to help. The county know how to respond when somebody wants to develop first off, and then what the outcome for the community is desired to be. So this particular individual, in most cases, unless we know that we've got to punch through, is it 1800? Is that the subject or is that a different, is it a different road?
Yeah, that's part of it. So part of it is 1800. Another part of it is apparently there's a big public park, I guess. Yeah, that's part of it. So part of it is eighteen hundred. Another part of it is apparently there's a big public park, I guess, planned for half of this land.
Majority of that public.
So the park, it's like, those are always flexible. So I, I understand that.
Yeah, in fact.
Is probably more probable than the park.
The best thing for him to do would be to get on that map. So as he's scrolling through that website, there is a map your comment feature. Get on the map, put a, put a, what do you call the?
Pin.
Pin, yeah, on that area and say, this is my property. I'm not interested in turning it into a park ever, nor will my descendants. Or consider it a park after I die and buying from my children. You know, those kind of comments are actually very helpful because that helps us decide where to kind of draw these, even though they're general lines, we do want to avoid the hotspots. Spots that are gonna keep the plan from becoming hot.
And then too, I, I'd like to see the public be more understanding than, I think, all of us for that matter. Our time on this planning commission has taught us a lot, and a lot with the public, general public doesn't get involved with the, the depth of what we get involved with. But it's just like you mentioned, eighteen hundred does seem to be making sense as we go through this process. And understanding, as Commissioner Edwards said, and Charlie as well, I think is a big deal. And then I think that, you know, it, it's easy for someone to say never. But, you know, it's, it's better to never say never because you don't know what in your lifetime might, you know, might come up and say, hey, you know, this might be a better option. This might be a better option for my family in the future, you know, and so. I just wish that we could get people to be a little more understanding, willing to be open minded about these things when we discuss them, so that the proper discussion can be had rather than just digging their heels in. Because it'd be nice to be able to plan more exactly now than have to dodge around these, these hotspots. So, anyway, absolutely.
Into your, to all of your thoughts, I'm living in Newanta Highlands. We were negatively affected by the whole doubt of putting Skyline Drive through. And it was frustrating because it was my understanding that the, the plan had been made, so when these people had this land, there wasn't, there wasn't understanding that that was. The county had made their intent, they'd done the general plan, and the intent was for the road to go through. And so I think it's important that we do this general plan. And while the current owners may not be the ones affected by it, it's very important that the next owners know that there is an intent in place. So that they shouldn't be surprised when they, they find out that a road was intended there. So I think the general plan may not be intended for the current owner as, as much as the change of ownership.
I think that a lot of people think that. They're, they themselves at that moment, they don't see an end to their life. So they don't take that into consideration that there is gonna be, you know, handoffs, whether it stays within the family or leaves the family. And so that's what I kind of mean by, you know, it, it'd be, it'd be great if people could be a little more open minded and I certainly would, you know, as we go down this road. And we need to be as encouraging in that regard as we can, not forceful. I don't want to be forceful. I'm not trying to push anything on anybody, but at the same time. Just kind of let your mind go for a minute from how you feel right at this moment, being threatened, to what it might be when you no longer control it or you're no longer to control it.
One of my favorite things to ask folks who are kind of a little bit hard, hard, hard headed in this particular sense is, you know, do they ever plan to die? Because if that ever occurs, you know, there's, there's gotta be a backup.
Right, but you, you gotta, I don't know, at least I look at it this way, you know, I understand. You know, a lot of that land out there has been part of these families' generations for five, six generations, and now they're looking at like, okay, I know my kid wants to do farming. Generation. And they're hoping, right? They're hoping that their kids also could. Part of that family for generations to get to come. So when they look at it, I mean, a lot of the farm. Talked to have been like, no, this is generation. Ready to go. My, no, my kids don't want, right? It's only one generation away. The generation doesn't want to continue farming it. And, and they're ready to sell. It's, it's a tough thing, and I know that I, I'd hate to be the one that says, sorry. Maybe you won't have generation. But I, I'm just speaking generalities. No, I know that this plan is flexible and I know that people can overall be a little more flexible than they are, but I, I think a lot of people are very resistant. Idea that Western River County needs to continue.
One of the primary things, primary comments that keep coming back to us is that Weber County has to stop developing. Weber County doesn't develop. And that's something that doesn't seem to be common knowledge, at least not Western River County. We're here to try and facilitate and, and make development less impactful. We're, we're hopefully the good guys. Hopefully, we're here to help the community have a better outcome. That level of education just needs to be out there and, and we need to continue to have that conversation, that dialogue. So that people aren't thinking that Weber County is developing. It's gonna happen. In the Upper Valley, we're working on a, a village area plan and somebody came and said, well, gosh, we, you're, you're just gonna be creating all this tourism. Tourism doesn't exist because of, we, we don't create tourism. Cool places create tourism. We don't create growth rates in, in migration. Create fertility rates in immigration, create growth. That's unbelievable. So now we just gotta figure out how to, how to make sure we manage that. With this particular gentleman, feel free to give him my, my address or my phone number, and maybe have to reach out to him. And, and just chat. The, the chair, I think, used a very opportune word, which is. But it was essentially opportunity. We're just like trying to identify opportunity and a general direction. If they don't ever want to develop, well, hopefully we can up the ante and make them feel cool. Look for other ways that we can address the problem. Maybe we do snake around. We won't know unless they come and talk about it, but they've got to come and be able to come and talk about it with their interests in mind, not their position. If they dig their heels in and say never, we're not even gonna talk about it. That's gonna be hard to get them closer to what they want.
Right, right.
You know, it's all about supply and demand. There, there's demand for housing here. Supply is, is.
Oh, I was gonna say, supply is people.
But, you know, it, it. Things in my mind is, is. With all the. Here, the plan has to, in my mind, facilitate the roads or whatever we're doing that makes sense. The work creates sustainability for people want to be. You know, if, if we have to drive nine miles to go to a store that's four hundred yards away, nobody's gonna.
That's right.
And so I think that, you know, it's education. I think that. Except change, but we change every day because we get older. Markets change. It, it's one of these things that, you know, I've, I carry all my. Think that I'll, it's like. It's a future. Beat the drum. This is the place to be. This is. Coming this way. It's our future. It's gonna get smaller. It's a noble profession. Why I don't. Every day. It, it, it's just, it, it's ingrained in people. I have the deepest respect for these. It's a lot. Not an easy job.
I spend all weekend in Baylor, so I'm still a part of it too. You know, I hate, I hate, probably I'm one of the first ones of this group. Because of my age and because of how I grew up, that, that hated to see the first subdivision that I recall go in. But it's, it is unfortunate. It is. It's, it's gotten worse and worse. That first subdivision was probably close to fifty years ago now, and it was. Forty seven hundred, the C C forty seven hundred and about twenty eight hundred south. And it's, it's an, it's an unfortunate sign of, it was the beginning of, of, of an unfortunate sign for agriculture, I guess. But, but it is what it is, and I hate, I, I, I just caution, I won't say I hate, I, I just caution. That we don't plan better, and I think that, that this general plan is, is the bomb. It's, it's the tool that we need to have going forward. And we gotta get people's input and we gotta get their understanding. But I, I'd like to see people with an open mind approach to it, knowing that, that there's the possibility. That no matter how much they'd like to see things stay the same, that they are. And, and like I said, not trying to strong arm anybody into thinking my way or, or a particular way, but just have an open mind to what, what you're looking at as you go through this process. So that not a lot of. Extra. Surprise is gonna happen later on when someone in the family does decide, you know. The end of their agriculture career and, and by whatever reason, whether it's because the kids don't want to take it over or just simply because the fact that agriculture doesn't. Fit into the areas like it did previously, there's, there's a whole lot of reasons why. Agricultural, agricultural in this area on the scale that it has been in the past will change dramatically in the next. It's not, it's not just because somebody's not willing to stay. There's a lot of other reasons as well. So, and that's, that, those are all property owner, business owner, and when I say business, I mean the farms themselves. Those would be, you know, bridges that they cross as they go down the road.
I think there's been three good statements come out of this. That, you know, needs to be echoed through this. Open mind, education and understanding. I mean, that, that's. Moving forward through this process. Change and growth out in this area. I think back two meetings ago, we were, Charlie, you were drawing on a map, just with a marker. You know, possibly a road here, here, you know, connectivity, kind of talk through that. We took a beating on Facebook after that meeting. Because we drew a line through someone's house because that could be where a road went. Dramatically went to the, the county's gonna take my house and, and they're gonna build a road here and, you know. I, I think you've said this a couple times tonight. People's gotta understand these are all just living documents, you know, but just because it's on there, doesn't mean that's what it's gonna be.
Tearing down a house and buy, buying land that has residential value currently is, is very expensive. As opposed to buying a sliver of land to build a road on, on the corner or through the edge of somebody's property. So, yeah, I mean, the very last thing anybody wants to do is tear down a house. That's unfortunate that.
Yeah, literally, the meeting wasn't over thirty minutes and that page out there was exploded because of that. They just.
Did we talk specifically about tearing a house down or did we just draw a line?
Drew a line through it and that's how it went there.
I should have gone around it.
You drew a line through the house, now we're gonna tear it.
Might not have known there was a house there.
That's, I mean, you know, that's, that's where this starts, you know, a general plan comes from. You get some things on a paper and say, this could go good here, this could go, you know, good there and.
And you go out and ground truth. Yep, you ground truth, you figure out what's out there, you figure out what your alternatives are and you build on the best alternative. The goal is to never turn, tear a house down. Oh wait, this was your house. Uh, yeah, that's right.
A different conversation, but just had the light.
Sorry, Commissioner Bell, I don't know if we did you any good or not with all of that.
All my attention was just to kind of bring up the fact that I've had. Kind of make everybody aware. It's gonna be a challenge.
So we're gonna have an open house, October-ish, hasn't been formally, the date hasn't been formally been set yet. So we're drafting as, as quick as we can as we speak, but we still have the comment period online open until the twentieth. So any of you who are on those social medias, feel free to make a post that maybe you get the comments in by the twenty. Not making a comment is akin to being quiet and, and rolling over, so make a comment. Not open house, that's where we're gonna kind of go back to the public and say, alright, what did we get right, what did we get wrong? Alright, your house is here? Didn't know that. Let's go around. Or something to that effect. So coming to this meeting might not have been beneficial for them. But coming to that meeting is gonna be very beneficial. Or he can give me a call inside and I could look at the maps and, and make sure we, we do something different. I mean, best case scenario, I think it's gonna be to get UDOT to go over the river. Eighteen hundred won't ever go through this property. Go down to twenty five hundred. Somebody else's property that we're. Somebody else's property.
There's a park on my mom's property that you're putting. Down by the Ogden Bay.
Oh, yeah. I just, I just took the floodplain. That's all I did is took a floodplain and said, well, there's a lot of development gonna happen here, maybe a park.
Okay, any, anything else? Okay, we'll move on. Planning commissioners, comments?
I just wanna make one, just to staff and especially to. Our, our new member of our staff and, and Marta. You know, I just wanna say thank you for getting us caught up on the minutes. I, I could only, as much as we ramble in these meetings, especially in some of these meetings that go till ten o'clock. I can only imagine trying to dictate what's being said and stuff like that. So I just wanna say I really appreciate your work and what you do and getting these minutes back to us because it really helps us. So I just wanna thank you guys very much.
And I want to make sure that my, my corrections aren't. It is difficult and, and I, I appreciate what you do, so I don't want that to offend you in any way.
Anything else?
So I do, so just to kind of hit the general plan. Have we gotten a lot of community input then on, I was afraid of that, that survey?
We've, we've gotten quite a few survey responses. We haven't had anybody getting into the map and drawing lines or making comments.
Everybody's got on there, did the survey and then deleted the link and.
Probably, and that's the, I'm a little bit concerned about that. I, I mentioned to a couple of people, when we made those maps, what we did was we took the constructive feedback, criticisms included. But if we could do something with the comment, we mapped it, or we changed the map or whatever it was. The don't do's, the I hate, the this isn't gonna work kind of comments that don't provide any kind of value added input. We put on a list so that people knew that we heard it, we were listening to it, and we were trying to figure out what to do with it, but at the end of the day, there's nothing that can be done with those kind of comments. In, in the realm of something where we know we need to make something, we need to come up with something for the community better. And so best thing to do when we're talking to other people is just make sure they know what we're, we're good with criticism, criticize. But come up with an alternative, have some constructive feedback, because otherwise.
Write some kind of alternative.
Yeah, something, you know.
And this, this exactly parallels what you're seeing there, parallels when we have a legislative one.
That's right.
You know, it's unfortunate. And then when decisions are made, because they have to be made. You know, it's too late, then all we get is complaints from that.
And you become the bad guy.
And we're the bad guy.
Now, our consultants say that in their opinion, that we've received quite a bit of surveys back. So the, the feedback coming in, they think is high relative to the amount of population. Which is the same kind of response we got in the Ogden Valley. Like, there are a lot of people who want to be participating in, in this compared to the population size. You know, the bigger cities and, I mean, they get less comments. So for better or for worse, we've, we've got people who are interested. It's just I haven't seen anything. I think we have four comments on the map and one of them's in the city. Say West Haven, we can't do anything about.
Alright, just, I was just curious to see how. Our response in the community's been.
I'll give you an update on that, but we'll do that in the next meeting. Give you an update on how many surveys. The survey online will be closed and the online comment period will be closed. Get some feedback before we go into the plan writing.
Maybe it would be good to have some perspective. Sorry. Maybe it would be good to have the perspective, sorry, of the consultants too, I mean, obviously, they've done this before. Whether this is high, I mean, they know, I mean, there's 4,500 people out there, 5,000.
Comments, yeah, that's.
I mean, put it all in, in perspective.
20th. Yeah, 25th of August. And hopefully everybody got a flyer in your utility billing for this month saying that.
I'd ask my wife.
If not, we'll, we'll have to light up some emails and make sure we do enough to, to the evenings. I want to make sure people can make comments if they.
Oh, yeah, that's a hard thing. Online billing, those notices can't go out.
I'll push, I'll push the, the graphic of that flyer to the Facebook page to chill.
Anything else? Anything? We always go toward Western Weaver County, how about you, and is there?
Zero. No, I don't know for sure zero in terms of the surveys, I don't know what the numbers are, nothing on that.
It's hard because.
Right?
Strange.
I think the best outcome in the general plan would be to encourage that area to incorporate into an adjacent city or annex.
There's been some discussion already from county commissioners and how to encourage people to either annex or incorporate, right?
Right now, you gotta be in an island, but we'll see if that changes. Just, it's gotta be adjacent. Yep. You can convince UNT to change the name to UNT Highlands. Just come and swallow, yeah. Yes. Yeah. The county tried to fight that, that pretty hard there on Combe, but once it went into the city, it wasn't our control. The one, one feedback I got, and it just came from somebody in the office over the engineering division who lives in the Highlands, said, why are you doing, why are you putting fly, or banners up in the Highlands for Western Weaver County? Right, and it doesn't say Western Weaver General Plan, it says Western Weaver Futures, and they're just, this is the best move, I think a lot of them think it's Eastern Weaver County.
Yeah.
Right?
Hell Tucker, I'm disappointed.
It was, it was Tucker, and, and he knew, he, he knew why, he wasn't asking the question, he was asking the question for someone. That was the only feedback that he's received.
Okay, anything else?
From myself or from the planning commission? Sorry, from myself or from the planning commission?
From the planning, from anybody. Well, we'll move on. Planning director reports.
Yep, didn't know if you moved on to that already. I just wanted to make sure we do acknowledge June, so we've got June Nelson, our new staff, and we've got Marta over there training her. June will be this, it'll be this planning commission that you're doing, that's all right, June. So we'll have her go solo at some point here in the future. That's all I had.
Mr. Keel. It was a good meeting, no comment for me. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like meeting for a long.
Good night.